Roll call, please.
Trustee Rassage.
Here.
Trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Fay.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
If you'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
I have none this evening.
Trustees' comments?
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the Plainfield American Legion for once again organizing and facilitating our excellent Memorial Day celebration here at Seltzer's Park. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments? Hearing none, this would be the time for public comments on items not on the agenda, not to exceed three to five minutes per topic. Please come to the podium, state and spell your name for the record, please.
I'm Quandorno, B-U-O-N-G-I-O-R-N-O.
Is the mic on?
I think it's on. How's that? Can you hear me now? Yes, I'd like to, the last time we were here, we went over the same thing. This has to do with ejecting the grass into the streets throughout the community. I know on Meadow Lane, it's, it's, there's one house in particular that's a problem. We've commented about it, we've called about it. We've got water problems down in that area to begin with, and as you know, that there's an Illinois statute that for the EPA that says you can't eject into the streets where it goes into the sewer, it goes out to the rivers. Well, it seems to be a fine line that there's no one really, it doesn't seem like Plainfield has a direct ordinance that would, that would go along with that. So it's hard, who writes the letter or who talks to the person that's doing this? That seems kind of, kind of crazy to me, you should have an ordinance for that. I would like to see the board enact an ordinance that makes it illegal to eject the grass and the clippings into the street. Matter of fact, hate to say this, but the village is probably one of the biggest offenders. When you cut the center, the centers of the dividers, you're throwing the stuff into the streets rather than starting at the curbs and coming in, you're starting in the middle and going out. It clogs the streets, now you get, you get people calling that they have water problems, the water's backing up on the streets. It is going out into the, into the river. Being a home rule community or home rule city, you should be able to enact that ordinance with no problem. This way, code enforcement could enforce that without much of a problem. I've got pictures, I'll give them to Alan. This just happens to be the one house that we're always complaining about. This is Indian boundary, you can't hardly tell the street from the grass. The sidewalk, forget about it, you might as be walking on her lawn. We complained about it last year, for the whole year, we're doing it again this year. It just doesn't stop. I mean, somebody's got to take initiative to that and, you know, go down and say either you clean it up, or we'll clean it up for 75 bucks or whatever it is that you're going to charge to have that done. I, I just don't know why that's such an issue. I'd like to see enact that ordinance so it gives the police some teeth. They're, they're the ones that can enforce it. The letter would come from the police department, not from the village, or it'd be actually on the police stationery, or code enforcement officer can go and take care of that. I just, I, I don't see why that would be, would be an issue. Be more than happy to give these to Alan if that's what you want to do. Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments?
Excuse me, sir. Hello. My name's Ed Arter, I'm a resident of Plainfield for about 30 years now. And I'd like to bring up an issue about public safety. And as a visual aid, I'd like to pass around to you guys so you could get a hands-on feel for what I'm going to be talking about, if you don't mind.
You can just show us.
Just go ahead.
Pass it down. Go ahead, no. Pass it.
Anyway, what it is, is a hunk of fractured steel, about the size of an axe head, ragged, fractured. If we were in Afghanistan, you'd call it a piece of shrapnel. It, well, probably weighs about three pounds. We're not in Afghanistan, though, and the place where I found these is right down the middle of our village, where 35,000 to 40,000 people go by every day. This comes from the middle of Route 59. This is a fractured piece of what they call reflective pavement marking. Reflective pavement markers are those little things in the, they delineate the pavement lines, the lane lines. This has been fractured for some reason. Either it was the freeze-thaw cycle of our severe winter, maybe the snow plows, maybe the snow, maybe it's failure of the epoxy, but for some reason, these things are dangerous. I remember about, well, it had to be 12 years ago, someone on the Dan Ryan got wiped out. One of these things flew up from the back end of the truck, went through the windshield, and the lady died. Same thing could happen here. So I figured, one of these nice days, I'll go for a walk. I walked from Overman's down to McDonald's, from Route 30 down to Enwick, and I was astonished. There's 48 pieces that have either failed, or are gone, or are going to fail, have cracked in place. Some of them are in the gutter, some of them on the sidewalk, some of them are in people's yards, but I wouldn't want to see anybody on a bicycle or a jogger be walking on the street and, or on the sidewalk and have a truck come by and flip one of these things up. This thing will kill you. If the oncoming traffic is coming at you at 40 miles an hour, and you're going the other way at 40 miles an hour, that closing speed, velocity is 80 miles an hour. So can you imagine getting a hit in the head or anyplace on your body with this hatchet fragmented piece of shrapnel? It's really not a Plainfield issue, other than it's our residents who are in danger. It's an IDOT maintenance problem. And like I said, I don't know what the cause of it is, all I know is in less than a mile, there's 48 possibilities, something like this happening. So I was wondering if maybe people on TV could call IDOT, or maybe we could take action on, on the boards then and contact IDOT and tell them, hey, you've got a serious problem here, guys, something happened. And I, we don't know why, but it's IDOT's maintenance, they should do something before somebody really gets hurt. This will go right through you, it'll go through your car. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Not, I'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to amend the agenda to remove item number six, Rod Baker Ford.
So move.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to amend the agenda. Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda, to include minutes of the board meeting held on May 19th, and minutes of the special meeting with Congressman Holtgren held on May 16th, bills payable and bill, bills paid and bills payable reports for June 2nd, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for April.
That is my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through C under the consent agenda. Trustee Rassage. Trustee Rippey.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is witty rezoning. We're seeking board consideration to adopt an ordinance rezoning the southeast and southwest corners of 127th Street and Naperville Plainfield Road to B3.
So move.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, that ordinance number is 3157. Trustee Rassage. Trustee Rippey.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Chicago Street road closure. We're seeking board consideration of a request by Plainfield United Methodist Church to close Chicago Street between Displanes and Illinois Streets from 5:30 PM to 9 o'clock PM on Wednesday, June 5th, and Thursday, July 24th for activities related to a concert.
So move.
It'd be Wednesday, June 25th.
Okay.
Second. We're talking about just a short, one block. Where the concert right by the, easily get around that.
That's correct. One block.
Yeah. It's nice to be able to show off the carillon, which they finally got all the bells done for, so. Nice destination again for Plainfield.
I, I have one question. Was, is there any, there's, you know, a few houses there and there, and I'm, I'm supporting this, but is there any information or somebody inquire at all about doing this? Do we get any information on it, any phone calls on it or anything?
I'm not aware of any inquiries by any of the residents, but we'll make sure the church works and obviously be very sensitive to the residents.
No, that's perfectly fine, I, I support it, I was just checking that out. Thank you.
Just to continue on that, with those homes, there is driveways right off that portion. Have they made a combination with maybe Chase Bank or something so they can park there and get in and out?
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded to allow the road closures on Chicago Street as requested by the Plainfield United Methodist Church. Trustee Rassage. Trustee Rippey.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is triangle shops. We're seeking board consideration to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance rezoning the subject property to B3.
Yes, on this matter, is, again, just very briefly, provide you a summary of this and a very brief review. As you recall, this did come before the, those board over a month and a half ago. This case was actually remanded back to the planning commission. Approximately two weeks ago, the planning commission did make a recommendation to support the requested rezoning. The applicant is requesting that this property be rezoned to B3. As we speak, the property is currently zoned R1. The applicant's also proposing to basically a new retail center of approximately 4,400 square feet on this proposed project on the site, which would incorporate a drive-through. Some of the modifications which have been made since the last time the village board considered this case was, there's been a modification, perhaps most importantly, is the access point. The access point, which was previously incorporate on Oak Street, has been removed and now the applicant's proposing a full access point, I'm sorry, Arnold Street's been removed. The applicant is now proposing a full access point on Oak Street in an attempt to try to address some of the residents' concerns. Another modification is the applicant has basically incorporated some additional landscaping along Arnold Street, again, in an attempt to address the residents' concerns. There was obviously a very robust discussion at the village, at the planning commission as it relates to some of the residential concerns about this proposed property. The general configuration of the site itself has not dramatically changed. Again, the parking's generally oriented towards Route 59. The applicant, again, is proposing a Dunkin' Donuts with a proposed drive-through. The proposed site does meet the village's ordinance as it relates to parking and also the stacking requirements with respect to the drive-through itself. As it relates to one aspect that's been discussed is division for division, as you know, the village board previously reviewed that, but there's been extensive discussion on the vision for division website about this. Generally, the proposed site plan is not generally consistent with the vision for division as it relates to the actual context or the actual location of the site itself, but the planning commission did determine that they believe that the site was an auto-oriented site, generally did not support the vision for division, but I just wanted to bring that context up for general board support. So if there's any questions, Mr. Martin, counsel for the applicant and their whole development team is actually here this evening to answer any questions that the village board may have.
Question for staff. One of the planning commissioners asked, requested staff follow up with the school district, possibly the school board, to see if they had any objection to this with a bus stop within proximity, if they wanted to move that. Did staff take direction and reach out to the school district?
There's an actual stipulation that basically the school district would have complete veto power over Oak Street, the Oak Street stop, so they would have, obviously, basically would have to basically work with the applicant to make sure that the school district completely concurs with that proposed Oak Street stop. As we, as we discussed extensively, there is a bus stop on Oak Street and there was extensive discussion about that. The applicant's attorney did reach out, or it did make a representation, they would potentially reach out to the school district to make sure that they could basically arrange an appropriate, safe bus stop. But there's an actual stipulation in the actual staff report which addresses that.
Right, I saw that. So our, our staff have not asked the school district what their take is on this particular.
That's correct.
Can I ask the applicant if they've reached out to the school district and what their response has been?
Certainly. My name is Mike Martin, I'm the attorney for the applicant. 24012 was Main Street, Plainfield. I did not reach out to the school district because as I understood, the stipulation was that the project was approved, my efforts were then to attempt to contact the school district to see if the bus stops could be moved and alert them to the fact that this project was approved by the village. So I was waiting for approval before I wrote to the school district to alert them that this site would be coming in. I don't think they redo their routes at this time yet, anyway, for next year, so I don't think we'd be changing anything. Construction probably wouldn't start till late summer, so we'd be looking at probably when September, when they go back to school. But I, I could, I could do that before the next meeting in two weeks, that's not a problem. I just understood it that if it was approved, I was to read, and I volunteered to do that.
Okay, so if this is successful tonight for us to direct the village attorney to draft the ordinance, you could reach out to them.
Oh yeah, I'd be happy to.
Before we actually vote to ratify it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Not a problem. I'd also mention that in one of the planning commission stipulations, which I did not notice on, on the packet that I think that went to the board, was that we were to work with staff to include some additional landscaping along Arnold Street. And I don't know, maybe if you go back to the site plan, Mike, including some evergreens, so that really should be as part of your approval. And I think where we're looking at is right here where this bend is, because this is where the cars, am I on the right spot?
If you wish to talk, Mike, you have to get a mic.
And take the board.
All right, no, I just want to, I'll get back to there. Yeah, right on this bend here, because the, the order board basically is located in this location that faces north to Walgreens at six feet tall, but they'd be stopping at the order board, so staff and my client met regarding the landscaping, we would put more evergreens in that location, and we also met regarding the, the architectural elements that Mike was concerned about on the east side of the building. We switched the building to an all masonry building, arched windows, clock tower. Our architect went around and viewed buildings in Plainfield and incorporated elements into the architecture from what the previous plan that was submitted. I have my site engineer, Ed Seaford, here from Intech. I think the mayor had asked me to make a presentation, so I'm prepared to make a presentation, if you'd like, regarding the site plan. I have the architect present. I also have the eventual owner of the property, a representative, Raj Patel. And I think if you, I don't know if you've all reviewed it, but I did send a letter to everybody via email regarding Patel being a local businessman and a very successful businessman in this area, and they, they are the eventual end user. So I also tried to lay out what I estimated the annual revenues to be and revenues over a 10-year period, and jobs that would be created by the project. In addition to that testimony, which I all gave at the planning commission, I think if you go out and you stand on this lot, the most significant thing that you see is it's part of Walgreens. We share the driveway with Walgreens on Route 59, we're dominated by Walgreens. Next to us, or along Arnold Street is already Walgreens Drive Up. What we've done is, my client listened very closely to the last planning commission meeting. He wasn't my client at that time. After the planning commission voted unfavorably, he came in and met me, and we discussed all of the changes, and he tried to address everything that could be addressed and to minimize the impact of this site on the adjoining landowners. And we came back and we presented that to the planning commission. They went over thoroughly every change, they went over thoroughly the traffic patterns, and they voted in favor of my client's proposals. And what we're basically seeking is, we're seeking B3 zoning, which I think staff had already believed it was zoned earlier, B3, but for some reason, that application was never completed. We're also seeking approval of the site plan and the landscape plan as revised, and we're also seeking a special use for a drive-up. If we don't have the drive-up, it's not a financially viable product for the Patel family and they won't buy it. So with that, I'd be happy to present testimony if you want it, or answer any questions that you may have.
I have a couple of questions. There's been, I attended both the planning commission meetings, so I have a lot of the background, and there's been all the reports that have been given us. The fence, there's some talk from the residents that a four-foot fence is not adequate, would you consider a six-foot fence?
Well, actually, the four-foot fence was what staff had recommended that we put in, you know, to kind of keep the urban feel. We, we actually like the four-foot fence with the landscaping. We think that landscaping, as it grows in, will eventually make the fence height moot, but it's high enough to block any headlights, you know, as it exists now. And with all the architectural changes, we made the, in fact, you could see the facade here, we made it more or less a residential brick building facing those residences, so we'd actually like people to see it. So if, but of course, if you make it a condition that we have to do a six-foot fence, I'd, what choice do we have? But I think that...
That's what I was looking for.
You know, I mean, we would prefer not to do that.
There's a very specific comment made by a resident that the four-foot, the houses are, have steps up and as a result, this shines over. Don't know whether that's fact, but on the other hand, if six-foot solves that problem...
Pardon me? Yeah, Mr. Fry says he would do that, so.
Okay, that's fine.
It's not a problem.
The other thing that concerns me is the traffic study was not updated for the changes, and I'm not sure that's a critical flaw. However, it's, I'm not real comfortable with exiting on Arnold and the things that are going on. There've been a number of questions. I would like to see the traffic engineer, not necessarily redo the study in total, but meet with our traffic committee and go through this, if it's going to make sense to, it has the police, it has, you know, a variety of people on the committee. I'd like to see that committee get involved with the discussion. I mean, the numbers are numbers. We understand left turns and through and right turn and all that sort of stuff. I mean, there's nothing going to change about that, but exiting on, on Oak, I think is where we're going.
Yes, sir.
And then no right turn. I'd like to make sure that the local committee, our committee.
Right.
Makes, says that makes sense, or, there's also been a question about trucks, no trucks, I don't think that changes. Children to play, I don't think that changes either. You know, there's, there's a number of things in this type, but I would like to see that as a stipulation that the two meet and reach a consensus that this will work.
We could, we could also do that within the next two weeks, that should not be a problem. If you approve the ordinances tonight, and if we don't complete it by the next two weeks, then we don't vote on it at the, at the next meeting, if that's the situation. But just one thing that might help you understand, and I think I explained it to some of you, you know, it's designed to catch southbound traffic on Route 59, that's the business plan. So, you know, all the machinations you do to catch northbound traffic on 59, that's very inconvenient, it's very difficult to do. And it's built on, it's a business plan that's built on southbound traffic on Route 59 at this location. And the Patel family, who's very, very successful at this business, is willing to invest the funds to go with that business plan. And, you know, there's, you know, right now, the, the issue would be if it, if traffic were to enter and go back north, when you were talking about going back on Arnold, they'd be going out, well, you can go back to the photo, I like the aerial better, they would going, be going back to the Walgreens drive and going up Arnold to go back to 126 to get the light to go north. So that, that's how traffic would enter and go, and go northbound. But really, from this perspective, it's designed for people to pull in off this drive, come in, go into the drive-up, and come back out and go back down south on 59, which is what we anticipate will be the, the traffic pattern. And, and again, if you want to go back to the site plan, this right here, where we moved the, the entrance to Oak Street before it was on Arnold, which caused a great deal of concern with the adjoining landowners, we also suggested a no right turn sign at this point. And I believe some of the testimony that you, you might be referring to were things that as time goes on with the traffic pattern, there may be additional signage to control the traffic that, you know, we're willing to work with and we're willing to pay for and we're willing to do what, what has to be done as we see, you know, if there is an issue that arises. If, you know, we could put other signs that would say, no, you can't turn this direction or whatever, but that's something that should be done with a study, and we'd be willing to back that up and, and, you know, do a study if we have to do a study, you know, a year down the road or whatever the, the village would consider.
I just think it needs to, to make sense. Personally, if I were going in and coming out on Oak, I would want to turn right and go up Illinois. I wouldn't go up Arnold to get back to 126 to go north. I happen to live north, so if I came in, the right turn, no right turn precludes that. You're only, you're forced to go out on 59 going south.
Right.
And that's the one thing I'd like to have the committee say, does that make sense? If it makes sense, fine. I'd like to have the experts.
Okay.
Your expert and our experts take a look at that.
Well, I think, I think Commissioner Renzi took some of my traffic testimony and was very gracious and said, thank you. So I agree with you. I think the, the experts should talk, and we'd be willing to try and, and have our KOLA expert meet, and if there's revisions that have to be made, we'd certainly open to making those revisions, because quite frankly, we have tried to, or my client has tried to address every concern that was raised. And I think some of the, one or two of the commissioners even said that. Everything that I raised at the planning commission, I checked off and, you know, and that we had addressed it. So that's what we're trying to do. And, and I mean, maybe back to my original point, if this lot doesn't develop in this fashion, it's not going to develop, it's going to sit there. It's dominated by the Walgreens site, it's not going to develop. No one else is going to come along and say, look, you know, this is the proposal. I have a client who has, you know, done everything he can to address every concern that, that he can address, and has made every change that he can make. And I have a very solid local businessman who wants to buy the site if it's approved. And I think that, you know, given those factors, that we're asking for your approval on this site, we think the plan makes sense, and we think it's a, it's a good addition to the village.
Mr. Martin, I have a couple of comments I'd like to share.
Can I finish up? Paul? Go ahead. I would say the same thing. I tended to say the planning commission meetings, I heard the first one, all the issues that they raised, and the second meeting, they were basically all addressed as best they can, I think quite well. Actually, it's a very distinctly better design, it's still functional. The fact that it's R1 is because there was a house there, the house was taken down, everything else along that strip is going to be business oriented, so the fact they were changing the zoning to B3 is a non-issue from my point of view. It has to go that way if it's going to be anything at all. At least it looks nice now. For years, several years, it didn't look very good, people weren't maintaining it, at least it's maintained right now. So I think, and I've also, I first got involved with the, the board, there was a significant disconnect between the planning commission and the board. The planning commission would approve things, the board would say, no, I don't like that, another person didn't like this, and end up not being in sync. And I think if the, I have no problem with the board making decisions, but we ought to make sure we know what we want to tell the planning commission to look for. And I think they've done their job very well, they assessed the things, they didn't like what they first saw, they came back with things which they approved, and a four-to-one vote, they said, you know, we think this is far better and let's go with it. And I'd like to see, if, if we're not going to approve it, I'd like to make sure that we send some message to the planning commission, what is we're looking for, so we start, no longer have the disconnect which we did once before. But I think it's a significant improvement over what was there before. I got to commend, you know, on the site plan changes and the architectural changes, I mean, you've got two pages of changes of all that were suggested in the first meeting, so you've done a lot in the four weeks.
And we didn't think it was fair to let the board, to have to look at all those changes, that's why I suggested it went back to the planning commission, and that the planning That's why I suggested it went back to the Plan Commission, and that the Plan Commission conduct another public hearing, and that the public gets to look at it, and the Plan Commission gets to look at it, so that would make your job less burdensome, instead of us coming in and saying, "Well, here's, you know, two pages of changes on the plans."
And they, they had all the plans in front of them, so they went through it in detail, as you said, so...
Yeah, it was a long meeting. I guess I'm known for those.
Okay, sorry, Paul.
I have a couple of concerns that I wanted to raise. The largest, most significant one is the exit entrance on the Oak Street, on the south of the parcel.
Right there.
That's a very short stretch between Arnold and 59, and people turning right off of 59 onto Oak aren't going to see that intersection until they're on, on top of the intersection. And there's a similar situation at the mobile gas station right next to your offices. When you're coming around the corner, turning right off of 59 onto Main, it's, there's a blind spot there. And I have tremendous concern about people turning in and coming out of there to then go left to go right onto 59.
Okay, well, I think that was one of the things that we had discussed, that maybe at some point, it might be a good idea that there be no left turn from Oak onto 59. And that's something that we can't do, or we can't control. We can control by putting a sign here saying, "No right turn," so that that traffic doesn't go back onto Arnold, and that's what we've suggested. Quite frankly, you know my office is up here, I don't understand why people try to turn left off Oak Street onto 59. It makes absolutely no sense. And I also don't understand why people try to turn left from 59 onto Arnold or to Oak Street, because it's a very inconvenient thing. It stops traffic, you can't get through. But what I, what I can say is that there are breaks, because the light at 126 and 59 is at least a minute and a half, because it has a left turn signal. So even at the busiest rush hours, if you're coming out here and you want to go right on, onto 59, you'll have an opportunity to do that. You also can go through the lot again and come up to the, the Walgreens Drive and exit right down here again. You can't go left, because it's right only.
I think that would be a more logical and safer approach, to use those...
That is available under this plan. Both right turns are available.
To use the current entrance and exit on 59 and Arnold and forego the one on Oak Street?
Yeah, I think we need the one on Oak Street, though, for the traffic circulation. I think that if we didn't have it, I'd, I, you know, and I'm not the traffic expert, but I think that that's what we should let the traffic engineer address as opposed to myself, but I think it's needed. And I don't think with having just one, one exit and one entrance into the site with the drive-up can create a lot of safety hazards. I think we need to have the entrances and exits so that it can be accessed by both fire and, and ambulance, and it also, just to make the flow go. I think it'd, one, one exit alone would back it up too much, that it wouldn't be practical, wouldn't work. But I, that's just my opinion. Is Mr. Worthman here? I don't see him. Oh, here he is. He's our traffic engineer. Would you like to have him try to address that, sir?
No, I, I've expressed my concern, and I, I still think it should be reconsidered.
Okay.
I think the current layout of the parking lot is adequate, and I think we're adding further congestion, further poor judgment in turns. People are going to come out of there. I've seen people turn against a right turnout. I've seen them turn into a left turn-in or turn-out.
No, I agree. People drive like idiots. They drive how they drive.
And I think it will definitely mean the village installing four-way stop signs at that intersection.
We can add that to the list if we're going to have Mr. Worthman meet with staff as a condition of approval, if you consider that, because we can just add that issue, and he could discuss that with staff when he meets with them. Any other questions, or any of my witnesses you would like to ask a question of?
I, I tell you, I have, I have some serious concerns with the layout of the homes right there. That street is very narrow. Arnold is very narrow, small side street. When we approved a different type of facility similar to this, a competitor along, which, by the way, I voted for this one as well, on that other, in the other area, on 126, there was a big issue about traffic and how busy it was and everything. I think this is, this is the wrong spot for this facility with the drive-through. It just, it just doesn't work. When you have, if these homes were already in the process of a BTD, and they were actually businesses that were there, I could see that possibly being functional and maybe working through that, but you're going to have trucks coming through there. To say there's not going to be trucks, I mean, we can't even keep the trucks off of downtown on Lockport Street, so you're going to have trucks, you're going to have all kinds of traffic there. I just, I know we need something viable on that corner. It's not going to be residential, and I get that, and I'm not looking for that. But this time, type of use, it's too small for this. We were moving the monument, now we're not moving the monument. We were closing down Oak Street, now we're not closing it down. I just, I think that this is, yes, there's a vision, but that vision is long-term, and I just don't think the surrounding areas are where this needs to be right now to, to go with this. And, you know, I, I just don't, I, there's so many things that just don't make this viable, to put it, this facility with the drive-through in that area with families and everyone else, and, and whether the bus stop gets moved by the school district. I mean, they'll move that, and they'll work around that, but it's a block away or half a block away. It's still right there. It, it's, it's, it's too residential and too small for the type of facility. I love the architecture, it's beautiful, but it's too small for what you're trying to put there. And I think it's going to be a traffic nightmare, I think it's going to be a, a personal nightmare for these people. I mean, you can put up a fence or whatever, but, you know, the, and I've been called out on the drive-throughs on, on my other decisions, because people felt that they were too close to the homes, and they're a lot further away than these are. So I, I, I just, I'm sorry, I cannot support this in this location. I would like it if you found a different place, but this isn't it.
May I just say, so I think the Starbucks drive-up is a lot closer to the residences than our drive-up is, and that Vision for Division plan actually calls for all these homes on Arnold to be, become businesses, and Arnold Street to close, and there be some sort of court, you know, commercial business set up here, along with the businesses along Arnold, that would all face that and be a court. And I, I don't think any of the people here along Arnold are saying that that's what they would want. In fact, I think, I think there was a builder row on the north, two homes here, they were turned over to the bank. I think there's been two other foreclosures on the street that the property was turned over to the bank. That's not to diminish anything that the homeowners who live there, who have said and, you know, came forth and expressed their concerns. I appreciate their concerns, I appreciate yours, but this project without the drive-up is not going to happen. It's not going to be viable, and that, that's all I can say.
And I understand, I agree, and that's what I'm saying. It is, it is supposed to be BTD, but right now, today, those, it's not BTD, those are single-family homes, and who's to say who's moving into the ones for sale? And I know the other two that you're talking about actually face more on 126. I know where they're at, because when I was on planning, the, the owner of those homes wanted to take those two buildings down, and then the Planning Commission at that time said, "No," and here we are. And they could have easily been commercial, which made sense, so right on 126, it made sense. But right now, today, those are homes, and around those are homes, and right behind them, it just, it's just a small, little neighborhood side street, and that's, I just don't think it's the right spot for this. And Starbucks faced out on a major thoroughfare in a, in an existing strip mall, and maybe the drive-through was too loud for that, but that's why I said yes to that when I voted, and I said yes when it was proposed to be a Dunkin' Donuts. I voted yes for either, either one of those two businesses there, because it made sense, it's on a busy thoroughfare, it's in a strip mall, and it's going. I mean, you're not, you're, you're going to live near busy streets, you're going to hear some of it, but these people are literally facing this with a very small side street, and, and it just doesn't seem to work, that you can just drive right out. If I pull, if I, I have an expedition, if I pull out of Walgreens, which I have, and you go to turn onto Arnold, you're halfway in the street in just that SUV, not even counting, a huge truck. It's, so that's where I'm coming from, so...
I understand.
That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Let me make another couple of comments. The one across the street, I opposed, because I thought it'd be a major traffic problem. I'm told by people sitting up here that my expectations have not been realized, that people actually can get in and out of that pretty easily, and it's been a good addition to Plainfield and a good business, if I remember right. So I understand the expectations of traffic getting a lot worse, but I'm not sure in reality that they will. Arnold Street already has an exit from Walgreens, as Trustee Benucci just said. It's a, it's a short, very short street. It goes one small block and then a fraction of another block, and that's it. It's not going to have a lot of traffic on it, particularly if you're exiting on Oak and taking them back to 59 in the direction they were going anyway. So the trucks are there not because of Dunkin' Donuts or whatever, they're there because of Walgreens. Walgreens is there. I love the Division for, Division for Division, but I can't see us getting there as long as Walgreens stays there. And we've also had the corner of Lockport and 59, the northwest corner, there's a house there that they wanted to tear down for some time, because they want to basically put up an office-type building, maybe mixed-use type building. Now, that's, they've had permission to do that for several years, they haven't moved ahead. So to take down Walgreens and go farther up towards 126 is probably not going to happen in my lifetime. I'm older than most, but it's still, I don't see it happening real quickly, so I'd like to see something useful go in there that, that fits and looks attractive to the community. I don't, I love the vision, but I don't see us getting there anytime near term, and I think, from my point of view, this could be an asset. And my expectations of the wide turn, or voted against the other one, turn out to be not correct. It's a viable business, and the traffic flow, as awkward as it is, has not hurt 126 or 59, for that matter, so, to the best of my knowledge.
Any other questions I can try to address?
You may need a motion. Do you want to make a motion? All right, let me see if I can find the paper that tells me what my motion ought to be.
Trustee Lam, we'd be seeking a motion to, to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance rezoning the subject property to B3.
That's my motion.
Would there be a special motion for the, special use for the drive-up, or a separate motion?
That has to be a separate motion.
Okay.
We've got to go through B3 first, I think.
Okay. Just a question.
Is there a second to the motion? There's no second to the motion. Next item on the agenda is the Administrator's report.
No report.
Management Services' report.
I have one item for consideration tonight. As in the past few years, the village and, along with its underwriter, Robert Baird, have been monitoring market conditions again for existing debt that the village has on the books. At this point, it looks like the tax-exempt municipal bond market is looking hopeful for an opportunity for the village to re-achieve debt service savings by refinancing their Series 2007 general obligation bonds. In preliminary, preliminary estimates, by refinancing these bonds, gross debt service savings is estimated at just about $505,000 net of estimated fees, just over 5% of refunded par over the life of the bonds. As the board may recall, last year, when we refunded our last debt issuance, S&amp;P upgraded the village's rating from AA to AA+. Had the village still been at the AA rating, we would see a lesser savings by about $80,000. So good news is, is with that upgrade, we're saving an additional $80,000, reflective with the, within that $505,000 number. Sources of payment and final maturity dates would remain unchanged. These are funds that are coming out of the village's capital fund in the current fiscal year and future fiscal years. Nothing else would change over the life of the bonds. All that we're looking at is taking advantage of the reduced interest rates that are currently in the market and achieving cost savings over the remaining payment schedule of the 2007 bonds. What you have in your packet tonight are the cost estimates, the cost savings estimates on the advanced refunding that we're looking at, and also the bond ordinance that authorizes the issuance not to exceed $10.525 million of general obligation refunding bonds. There are terms and conditions listed within the ordinance, which helps staff, as well as the underwriter, to select a day or date for refunding to occur. With those terms and conditions, if the cost savings are not met or realized on that date, the village may not legally issue the bond. So it gives us the flexibility to pick a day that works a little better for the market, that staff can go out there and get the refunding done. So what we have in the packet is the bond ordinance. It's been reviewed and approved through Bond Council, and I also have Tom Gavin here from Baird &amp; Company to answer any questions that you might have on the issue.
I move we adopt Ordinance 3158, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $10,525,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2014 of the Village of Plainfield.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rasic?
Yes.
Trustee Rippe?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
That's all I have, thank you.
Engineers' report?
No report.
Planning Department report?
I have one question of Michael. We heard from residents in Springbank regarding the house that was built without masonry. What, what do we have in place moving forward, or what can we put in place moving forward?
We've discussed this extensively with, internally with staff pursuant to your direction. We have forwarded correspondence to the association or the representative, specifically Ocean Atlantic, advising them our interpretation of the ordinance. That is the interpretation of the ordinance, i.e., all facades shall incorporate a predominance of face, brick, or stone. Or alternatively, they could be constructed of all 100% cedar. But that, that's where we are right now with regards to that. I'm waiting to hear a formal response from the association as it relates to our interpretation of the ordinance.
Excellent, thank you.
Michael, I've got a question on that, because we've dealt with it, and I don't know if it's the same management company or the same HOA there that they had in Grand Park when we had the issues there, but I think we need to look into doing something to deal with the developer-based HOA, because these people aren't protecting, they're not providing a fiduciary duty to the actual residents. Seems like they're more interested in providing a duty to the developer until it actually gets turned over. I think we need to deal with that, and either, either give the residents some kind of release valve to get rid of the, the management company that's in place, or do something until the, those developments are at the point at which they can elect their own officers. But we've had this, and I don't know if this is the same management company, but we've had this twice now, where management company is kind of siding more with the developer than they are with the residents at that point, when in fact, their duty is really to the residents.
Right, no, it's, it's actually a different, so let's say, different company, but the same issue. There is a challenge when the developer still controls the association, and their interpretation's not always consistent with our interpretation of what the annexation agreement says. So that's, that's what we're dealing with in this case. So we've made it quite clear, from now on, this is our interpretation, and we'll make sure that the residents' concerns are addressed out there, and whatever's built out there is consistent with, with what's been built out there.
To follow up on Trustee Fay's inquiry, when we do receive a response from the developer on the materials, if they're not willing to cooperate and they thumb our nose at us, I'd like this to be brought up in legal and executive session, and us enforce the request that we've given staff as far as the materials that are required for that home. Thank you.
And, you know, and to, to add on to what, what both the trustees had said, there, I believe there's another home coming forward that's going to be in the exact same thing, so, you know, it's got a little bit of urgency there.
I don't believe we've signed off on that permit, have we?
Not yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You know, to add, if possible, Mayor, a, a comment in regard to what Trustee Fay and everyone else had brought up this evening. It's really a pressing issue, and it's an obvious issue, what is occurring is there, we've had a difficulty in Springbank, which is occurring right now, the enclave on Van Dyke and 135th, Grand Park North, what is occurring, and I think everybody should start realizing it, we have two planners in this, in the Village of Plainfield. We have three people working in the Building Department. They cannot cover all of these issues. Builders are putting in homes, I mean, I know our inspectors only inspect after a permit is issued. Our Planning Department does not have the time to go out and check to make sure everything is being adhered to. And builders are very close... And builders are very clever, and what they're doing is they're allowing houses to slip between the cracks and saying, uh, for example, what is occurring down in Springbank right now, uh, I saw all of the covenants and, uh, homeowners' association does not exist, it's controlled by the developer, and he said, "We're using new products." One line in there, and they're gonna fight it, and they're gonna say this is, uh, situation. It's very difficult for the Village of Plainfield to enforce homeowners' covenants. It's impossible to do so. And, uh, one of the problems, uh, people bring their issue to the Village of Plainfield. Unfortunately, uh, we have very little control over it. Uh, but what would upset me, and it really would upset me, and I've, I've seen a situation, you got, well, I'm gonna give you a nu- a numerical figure, I saw $400,000 houses, and someone was trying to plunk down a $200,000 house amidst this entire sub, in this development. I think that's totally wrong. You have covenants, they have to be adhered to, and what I'm saying is public. If you notice, uh, something that perhaps doesn't agree with what your covenant is, approach the Village of Plainfield like some individuals are doing from Springbank, from the enclave from Grand Park North. Bring it to the village's attention. Like I say, uh, we are underfunded and undermanned, and our departments are undermanned, and it's almost an impossibility. We can't send out Mr. Murphy every day, can we? No, and, uh, so...
I know there is.
Well, okay, but, uh, like I say, if there's an issue that you see in your own area, please bring it to the Village of Plainfield. And, uh, Trustee Peck brought up a, a excellent point. Uh, you know, someone can go ahead and build something, that doesn't mean they get occupancy. Doesn't mean they get occupancy. Uh, hold the individual responsible. If you try, if you try and, uh, drop it between the cracks, we can seal, uh, we can seal that particular problem. And it is a pressing issue, and I would, uh, not want it to occur in any of our subdivisions, no matter if they're high or low-ended. We don't have low-ended stuff, though. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's a problem with legal issues around it, and I think if we're gonna get involved in that, we need to have, uh, our legal ducks in a row. Uh, you have a homeowner association which is run by the developer. You don't really change it over to homeowners to run until maybe 75% or more is occupied. Springbank is nowhere near that.
No.
So, if you've got an official, legal homeowner association that says, "We wanna do this, and we're gonna say, 'We're gonna take you to court because we're the village and we wanna enforce something,'" it becomes a very expensive thing. I got involved this early on, uh, before the current administration, trying to do the same sort of thing in the Lakelands. Uh, we were homeowner-run at the time. I protested, uh, developer said, "No, we're gonna do it anyway." And I told the village, "I'd like you not to approve this." The answer I got back is, "Well, we're gonna have to approve it, 'Cause I'm not gonna go to court to defend your right to refuse them to do what they wanna do." It was a monotony issue in our particular case. It was approved design, but we said, "You can't put the same, several of them in a row." So, it becomes very tricky. Uh, I'd be, I think we need to be careful making promises that we can't live up to, if you will. I agree, it'd be nice to have the right kind of things done, and we can use whatever leverage we can, but how much of our legal expenses are we likely to throw into this battle when I think the law is not on our side? I think it lies with the homeowner association. They have more authority than we probably do over what happens in that particular subdivision. May be wrong, Mr. Harvey may wanna get into it sooner or later, but not necessarily tonight, but I'm just saying, let's be cautious, let's make sure we know what we're doing, and that we don't run ourselves into a, a trap that becomes very expensive.
No report, thank you.
Public Works report?
Thank you, just briefly, we had a resident that brought up a potential safety concern earlier in the meeting, and I wanted to assure the board that we take these things very seriously. Uh, we will forward these concerns along to IDOT promptly. Um, this is outside of the village's jurisdiction, and not only is it outside of our jurisdiction, but we are actually prohibited from doing any work on state roadway, so we will forward the concerns promptly along to Route 59, or along to IDOT related to Route 59. The, uh, first item that I have is actually a continuation of a three-year contract. Uh, two years ago, we had, uh, bid, we had sealed bids, open bids, for, uh, bio-solids removal from the wastewater treatment facility. Stewart Spreading provided the lowest bid at that time. Within the bid, it's a three-year, potentially three-year contract unless it's terminated by either the bidder or the village, but within the contract, they're allowed to increase the price by CPI for the given year. Last year at this time, the board approved the, uh, increase, although it was very moderate, less than 2%, um, and we continued with the contract. This year again, uh, the, uh, the contractor has the right to request an increase of 1.9%, which is CPI. Staff finds this to be acceptable. Uh, they are still lower than our, uh, lowest bidder from two years ago, uh, so I can't imagine that the bidding climate has become even that much better. At 1.2% at the size of this contract, uh, we're talking in real dollars, about $1,500 is the cost. Uh, what they actually, uh, provide as a service is they remove over 5,000 cubic yards of, uh, waste material. That material is then returned to the farm fields, it's tilled into the farm fields, and it's used as fertilizer, uh, throughout this area, and, uh, it's deemed to be a very, uh, good-quality fertilizer too as well. It, it turns out to be about 680 tons. So, with that, uh, staff is recommending the continuation of this contract with Stewart Spreading for, uh, the la- the last year of this three-year contract.
I move that we continue the contract with Stewart Spreading for another year.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded.
Just a quick comment, um, I'm glad we are producing a high-quality, um, type of fertilizer for the, uh, spreading, and I do agree with the, um, you know, the small, um, adjustment. I mean, every steel company does face higher overhead expenses every year, employees have to get, you know, raises, cost of fuel, maintenance of vehicle does increase. It's a very small increase, but I will support this, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to consi- to continue the contract with Stewart Spreading with the allowed Consumer Price Index adjustment of 1.9%. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you, and the last item that I have is also related to the wastewater treatment facility. At the same time, we did seek, uh, bids, sealed bids, open bids, uh, for, uh, the provision of alum to remove phosphorus at the wastewater treatment facility. Harcross Chemical was our low bidder, uh, two years ago, and, uh, within their contract, it also allows them to increase the cost by CPI, which is pro- little less than 2% last year. Um, it's at 1.9% this year. To, uh, Mr. Melisca's credit, he is seeking only an increase of 1% in the contract. Uh, Mr. Melisca, uh, lives within the community, um, he would, um, he likes doing business with the village. Again, these were sealed bids, and, uh, this is the last year of the three-year contract, but, um, I wanted to note that, um, we, you know, he, he did offer to only increase the price by 1%, so I have to give the contractor credit or the supplier credit for that, and staff would recommend the continuation of this contract as well.
That is my motion.
Second.
Just one question, Alan. This precipitates out, uh, the phosphorus, where do we get rid of the alum, or the precipitate?
It, it actually settles out within the sludge or bio-solids, and it ultimately becomes removed, so the two contracts actually work hand-in-hand.
So, it ends up in the fertilizer?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Just curious about that, 'cause disposing salts is not an easy thing, but if you've got a ready solution, it's great.
And it's, and it's low enough limit-wise that it doesn't even come close to exceeding the EPA limits for aluminum, so we're, we're in good shape there.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to continue the contract with Harcross Chemical with an agreed-upon 1% adjustment. Trustee Rassich?
Rassich? Oh.
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Police Chiefs report?
Thank you, I have one item for the agenda tonight. Uh, we have a piece of military surplus equipment, uh, that we acquired a few years ago that did not live up to, uh, what we were intending it to do, that being a light tower. Uh, the generator itself worked fine, but the other components, putting the light tower, uh, making the light tower operational, uh, we weren't able to, um, make it operational. Um, so, working with one of our vendors, they did have interest in the, uh, generator portion of it, and in the, uh, in the other negotiations with this vendor, uh, we're working to try to get emergency equipment for another, uh, military surplus vehicle that we've acquired. Um, the vendor has agreed that, uh, if we can declare this, uh, light tower surplus, they would be willing to exchange the light tower, the actual generator portion, for emergency equipment, uh, for that other military surplus vehicle that we have. So, I am looking for the board's consideration to declare the light tower, the mobile light tower, LTC4, as surplus equipment, uh, owned by the village and authorized to transfer the property for the other emergency equipment.
That is my motion.
Second.
I have one quick question. I realize this is a benefit to the village, but do we have storage available for these, uh, military units that we're getting?
We are improvising, sir.
Does that mean you have storage or not?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you.
And I have no problem, uh, turning over the light tower, but I, I do have to ask, what is our use for the MRAM?
Well, we have several uses. Um, it's still in the process of being, uh, placed in operational service. Um, it isn't our, uh, although the official name is Mine Resistant Ambush Protected Vehicle, obviously, we're not gonna be, uh, dealing with the type of situations that the military deal with. However, um, we do have, uh, specialty teams that do deal with barricaded hostage situations, um, and armed individuals. The armored portion of the vehicle is gonna become very beneficial in those type of situations. Additionally, the vehicle is configured as such that we can use it for flooding situations, where we could actually drive into at least four feet of floodwaters and rescue people out of vehicles or out of their homes, and this, uh, past winter, we were able to get the vehicle, uh, the, uh, the, uh, I, we call it an armored, uh, rescue vehicle, we were able to get it out in the snowstorms that we had, and driving it easily through four and six-foot snowdrifts, so it would become very beneficial in the event we have another major significant snow event that typically we have at least every other year or so, uh, to, again, rescue stranded motorists and, uh, things along those lines.
And lastly, um, apparently after Mr. Arter's presentation tonight, we might need to doubt on Route 59. Sorry.
Let's hope we can solve that problem another way, but, uh, yeah.
Are there any other comments or questions?
No.
Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3159, declaring personal property owned by the village to be surplus and authorized to transfer the property. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Attorneys report?
Thank you, uh, under the Open Meetings Act, as, uh, the board knows, we must review our closed session minutes at least twice a year, and I've reviewed those, and my recommendation would be that the board, uh, release the minutes from the executive session of April 7th, 2014, and that the remaining minutes remain confidential as a, a need for confidentiality still, uh, exists.
So, move.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?[1748.97]